Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Muscatine County Borders Supervisors Meeting for Musca- excuse me, for July eighth, two thousand nineteen, I'll call the meeting to order. First item of business is to review the agenda.
Move to approve is presented.
Jeff has moved, Santos has seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Item three is to receive comments from the public, any members of the public wishing to comment on anything that's not already on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, because items with Mike Nolan from Brighton Architecture. Mike?
Good morning. Sherry says she's gonna stop answering the phone when I call, but I promise we're getting close now, so. I have two items today, basically change order request for the courtroom project, and I'm not sure which order they appear on the agenda, is it?
First is dehumidifiers.
Dehumidifiers, okay, so just to talk through this briefly. We wrapped up the plaster right before the fourth of July, and we had the painters come in and start to do their preparation work. Essentially, when they did their first round of primer over top, after coming back after the weekend of the fourth, noticed areas that we started to see some peeling paint, started delamination in some of those areas. Kind of taking a look and going into the courtroom space, they just mentioned, you know, it was fairly, it may have been kind of warm and humid the last couple of weeks. On the ground level, it was almost bearable, but when you got higher up, what we noticed was that the humidity levels were just too high, and the plaster was cured but not, you know, maintained, that was starting to soak up some moisture, and then the paint was not able to dry properly. We reviewed the options there with Sam Paul at Wolf Contracting, looked at potentially bringing in temporary conditioning for the space, and the idea was basically to bring in dehumidifiers was the most effective solution to get that done. So, we made a quick move, got the humidifiers in place to keep the painters on track, more or less, to keep the schedule moving. As of this morning, I went over and checked, the primer is in good shape, they've started to do their first coat. Everything looks to be doing very well, and humidity in the courtroom is much better controlled. We did have a discussion of whether this was an issue of the overall courtroom system, as it's been a little bit on and off. I don't think that's a particular issue here, I think it's just with the weather, and one of the reasons that we were doing this project was to bring up additional cooling load to the courtroom anyway, but with just kind of the hot spike we had, combined with materials in that courtroom, we had the general contractor doing drywall, which can produce humidity, the plaster's producing humidity, the paint's producing humidity. We're just now oversized for what the basic system is capable of doing. In addition, we're open to attic right now, as we're in the phase of the project, a lot of penetration, so. That's what you're seeing here, is basically a per diem, with a not to exceed for the humidifiers. We'll keep the- or dehumidifiers, we'll keep those in place until essentially we don't need them anymore, so probably towards the end of this week. Hopefully get a little bit less than this, and we get those taken out of there, but this is more or less to address environmental conditions in the courtroom to allow us to proceed on schedule.
Mike, do we have humidity control in that, in that building at all, do you know?
The dehumidification would come through the geothermal units, so each one of those fan coil units also has a condensate line that would take any sort of condensation, so more or less, it's just a function of the cooling. So if the cooling doesn't have enough capacity to pull that moisture out of the air, then it's just gonna build up in the space. So, overall, the dehumidification is a function of the geothermal system. But in this case, there's the four units that are in there right now, that were, when we originally started the project, just weren't keeping up with the cooling load at this time of the year anyway, kind of exacerbated that situation with direct access to the attic and the materials on board, we just didn't have the load in that space to keep up with humidity.
And Sherry, have we traditionally had like sweating window problems in the winter and stuff in that building, or no? Because we used like GeoHeat, so I wouldn't expect. Was that not since the new windows?
No, we haven't noticed anything of that, I think it's purely just a result of the construction activities in the exterior environment right now.
So, I guess my concern is, heat and humidity in the summer in Iowa, plus construction activities, if we know the great heat community, this all sounds very foreseeable to me. Why wasn't this in the bid, why wasn't this accounted for originally?
I could go back and ask that question, I think that the schedule, the exact timing of the schedule, when we would be doing these activities, was still a little bit up in the air when we were awarded the bid. If we had had some of this work done earlier in the summer, it may not have been much of an issue. I think we're just in this particular portion with the plaster and the paint, with the general contractor, and when we got the plaster, it was actually on site, that that probably slid back to a warmer time of the year than when we actually did that. And I would say that the plaster is a service, and the paint is a service, so it's not necessarily the general contractor's responsibility, but something that we decided to contract directly, so in that case, the environmental's are more or less the responsibility. If there's any, basically, hit to be had, it would be on me for not making sure that we had worked that into the direct contracts we had with the plaster and the paint services.
If I recall, the original schedule was to have us done in like, early spring, which you wouldn't typically have these humidity problems.
We did have some slip early on, with the general contractor didn't get started with demolition until about four weeks after the original start time.
Yeah, and the courts, the courts pushed back to start to like January, we didn't kind of clear the calendar, and I think originally when we let this, wasn't it like a November start?
Yeah, we had this out to bid earlier, so.
Is anybody offering to share this cost with us?
Essentially, we have these more or less at cost, so it's the costly humidifiers are one hundred dollars per unit per day, so we have five humidifiers in place. So, Wolf has done that, and they're basically a minor markup for getting the coordination of getting in there and back.
Are these big industrial units, or what are they?
These are from Phelps, so yep, there's five big ones, they're about the size of fifty-five gallon drone. Three are actually in the courtroom space, one's in the back conference room, and then one's in the larger conference room that's being built.
It seems like a tremendous amount of money to me.
It's same.
How many boxes are you in today?
I mean, I understand delays, I understand all that. I feel like we're getting nickel and dined on this project, and I don't like it.
What's the? What number of the humidity level is optimum for what their, the work, their performance would need to be, fifty-five, sixty, fifty?
I don't have a good answer for that right off, I know that this is probably more or less unscientific, we need to get the humidity levels down, so let's get about five units in here, which was more or less a, we'll call it a rule of thumb for the space size, so. This was, I would say we were reacting to the situation to, to get the, basically, the work in progress.
How much more work do they have left, I mean, if we approve this, we're gonna be complete by the end of this month, or?
So this will be at the end of, essentially, we have the painters are on site to do in a courtroom, they're gonna be wrapped up by this week. The plasters are completed with their work, and then the courtroom gets turned back over to Wolf for the completion of the fit out, and basically the trim. So the projected is still to be completed by the end of August at this point.
The end of August.
And we had some discussion about if we don't do this, what is the cost? Monetary cost and scheduling cost, if we, if we send the plasterer and the painter offsite until the weather settles down and the system can catch up, and we felt like that cost was more than, than
I'm sure it is.
the dehumidifier cost was gonna be. The weather was just brutal. Somebody have known that, maybe, I don't know, but, but, you know, this was something that Nancy and I talked it over and decided, we gotta go ahead and do it, keep the painters and the plasters on site. Plasters are from Chicago, they go off on another project, and what does that do to the? Yeah, so, I don't think anybody's happy about it, I don't think Mike was happy about it, but.
Well, it's not, to me, it's not a question of happiness, it's a question of foreseeability. And I feel that some, to me, this seems eminently foreseeable, I'm not a construction person, so I don't know.
Well, I think a little bit of the challenge is, you know, the way we chose to contract this project is, we had a general for the construction, but just due to the fact that, you know, we wanted this restoration, we did the painting and the restoration services as a service, and so that they weren't under the umbrella of the general contractor, we were the general contractor, so to speak, so probably.
And in trying to work around the court schedule with this project, what is the main word?
How much is the court system willing to chip in on this?
Oh, it's nothing.
Yeah, we're doing it for them.
Right.
But nothing?
We haven't approached them, but I know you've been asked about replacing the judges' chair. We don't do their furniture, so we're having that discussion.
But what's the discussion to have, we don't do their furniture?
Well, that's what I said, that's what I said, so we'll see when the judge comes. I just said we're not, we won't.
Where are we at on our project and our contingency dollars on the project? Are we well within our contingencies still?
Yeah, so I feel like we're, we're well within our contingency, I think we had about fifteen percent contingency set aside, something along that line.
Yeah, we're not even close to spending our contingency money yet.
And this is the area, just, and this is, for the next change order requesting too, this is the area that we anticipated we would be spending contingency is with the plaster and the paint, just because they were very specialized trades, and there were basically unforeseen conditions, or we could kind of poke our head above that drop ceiling, but we didn't have a chance to take everything down and do a full thorough inspection of everything that was in place, that just would have been not feasible at the beginning of the project.
Right, for, that, they included that contingency for unknown and unknowables.
Correct. I understand exactly where you're coming from, I feel your frustration, I think what we have unfortunately is a perfect storm of delays and slippage that happened, not just by, you know, there were some on the beginning with the courts, some with the contractors, you know, working, getting, with their schedule getting started, but then we also had the plasters, and this was, we had a agreement from them to be on site earlier, we pushed back a little bit. So, everything's just kind of slipped back, which is in the overall slippage of the project, is probably something we sat down earlier on, and maybe we looked at the overall schedule, if we worked some of those contingencies and said, hey, what if, maybe we would have identified that, hey, what if all this kind of stuff slides into the worst part of the year? In addition, there's been some, the, working with the system in the courthouse has been kind of on and off, so they think that it may have actually been completely off during Sunday, one of the weekend days.
Who's in charge of that?
Maintenance is working with that, and we have, I think they have trained on staff to, or on site to be working on that issue.
For my part, I understand why this happened. Understand that there's a lot of moving parts, and that's why, one of the reasons we have. I would just ask that you, to view in your own way, express your displeasure over the situation, and see if any, at least make some nominal attempt to see who's willing to help us out with this cost that was generated by the action of a lot of people.
Certainly, and that's the reason I had Wolf put this in as a per diem, so we get everything under control, and we could have those units pulled out earlier, and that number is the not to exceed of.
I mean, I don't want you to, you know, pull them out a day early, and then screw up the whole job. I mean, you gotta do what you gotta do to make it right, but, you know, it's frustrating.
What can you, what can you buy in the line of dehumidifiers for seven thousand bucks?
Not much. Little swamp cooler units like that, about a twelve thousand, or about a twenty thousand BTU unit, which you'd need to probably, that space, I'd have to do the calculation, you'd need twenty BTU per square, per cubic foot, so. Calculate the cubic feet in there, there's a lot. You'd probably need a couple hundred thousand, probably four hundred thousand BTU, I would guess, somewhere in that range. Are those like, how many BTU units are there, Mike?
I don't know, I'd go for.
I would guess they're twenty-four to seventy-five thousand, seventy-five thousand BTU runs for about nine thousand dollars each, a twenty-four thousand BTU unit runs about thirty-five hundred bucks cost to buy them. I have, I know that, because I just do them that myself, in my own building, so, they're expensive.
Do we have a thermostat in there right now for humidity?
They, each one of the, it's actually essentially controlled by, if I understand the controls correctly, there's a computer system in the basement that controls each zone, and that basically each unit has a sensor, and will start to try and kick out cooling as it can. What happens is that the water condenses, the air is running across the coils, it will just pull water out, so that's part of what the geothermal's doing, is it's sensible by kind of humidity, because it's all being pulled out.
But I'm getting at is, you can get a thermostat for fifteen to twenty bucks, that just gives you the humidity. I think what I would be interested in seeing is really, can we mount one of those up there where we're at? Find out what we're doing, because it's confusing to me how if this is unit is running, that the humidity is up so high, that what are we gonna see next summer, when we don't even have any work going on, and the humidity's still up there?
So far, the project is, and that's one of the reasons that we have a lot of corks through the ceiling to get into the attic right now, is that we are upsizing and installing a new system to upsize that cooling capacity in the courtroom. Again, that was, if we had that in place beforehand, then we would, this would probably be a non-issue right now, unfortunately, just with the timing of the project, that won't happen till the end, so.
But, to verify what you're reading in the basement, I would like to see if we could purchase a humidity thermostat that's fifteen, twenty bucks at Walmart. You can mount digitally, and it'll read, just like what we're seeing right here, what we're showing.
So we should be able to see it now?
Upstairs, up in the?
All these thermostats show humidity level.
I just want to make sure we're seeing something that actually reads accurately compared to what we're showing.
And, and one leg of the system, I believe, has been shut off to add to the, you know, because we're beefing up the third floor courtroom. So that didn't help, you know, with this not being able to keep, keep up, and, and all that new plaster in there is putting humidity in the air. Just, it was a chain of events, and we talked about a number of things, you know, is there something else we could do so we don't have to do this? But, like I said, we're risking spending the trace to all.
No, that's fine, and that's fine, for what you're. I would, my, my thought is just if we're gonna be doing the checkout on this HVAC units, and making sure once they're actually up and running, that we get what we're actually paying for, so it doesn't come down the road saying, well, we installed it, now we need to upgrade again, and we need to change, change it, we did the same thing at the fire station, put in all that unit, and then ended up saying, well, the geothermal didn't work, we ended up having to install more HVAC units on top, because we weren't able to actually meet what it said it was gonna do, which we probably should have done a better checkout in the actual final checkout. So that's more from my perspective of what we're doing on this, to say, are we really getting what we're paying for? And then in the end, come back and say, this is what we actually did get, so it's a simple twenty dollar check, in my view.
Absolutely. And the mechanical engineer will be on site next, or this week for the meeting, so I'll pass along some of these concerns, and ask some of these questions. Again, I've been very, or assured that there is additional capacity to expand for the system, and generally, the rest of the courthouse, when the system is up and functioning, has been comfortable, my understanding, this room particularly, in the summertime, when you have a trial with a lot of people in there, then that's where we've had the issues. So it's a known problem in this particular space that we've just kind of made worse, unfortunately. And yes, absolutely, should we have anticipated that or thought about that? Yeah, that should have been in my specification to talk about at first, weather conditions, or something along that line, and that hits on me, so.
Do we have a motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve the change.
It's been moved by Jeff, seconded by Santos, any further discussion? Motion to approve item four A, change order for the dehumidifiers, and an amount not to exceed seven thousand dollars. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, closed. And item B, same story, Mike?
Okay, so this is with the paint itself, so we, when we pulled down the ceilings and we saw what we had to deal with, we made some changes with the plaster, basically onsite decisions to basically add some more trim, and to make a more finished product based on what we had. So, with the addition of that, then we did have additional areas to be painted, so that's part of what's going on here. The other part, if you've been in to look at the colors on the new color versus what's over on the existing portion, is you'll see that it wasn't actually brown, and wasn't antique, they discovered is that in a lot of the coppers in the existing paint that we did replaster, there's just a tremendous amount of soot on there, which required a lot of cleaning and preparation work. So, again, these were things that we were able to pass photos and kind of pop our heads above the drop ceiling before we started, but we weren't able to see basically the extent of the work that was gonna be required. So, what they, it's basically for this is to do the additional painting for the additional trim work that we installed, which is just a more complex hand painting, and then to do the cleaning of the coppers. I think that was part of, they had a few spots with the peeling primer, just identified that there needed to be a little extra cleaning, so that's essentially what we're picking up right now. So that, that's the, that's, that's the request here, so. Again, I think this is fair, based off of what the original condition that we, or basically, we could show them before we started, but what we asked them to do with the additionals here, and again, this is part of where we held that.
And Mike, this includes the, does this include, like, I know the one spot on the, there were a couple areas where we had gutter issues, and they had to tear out both sections of walls, this includes painting and patch, those, we already had the plaster, I think we approved for that, but this is to paint that out.
Correct, so the painters, while we're doing the Deprado Regali, is going to be doing all of the ceilings and all of the walls inside the courtroom, essentially doing all the wall finish and paint inside the courtroom area, and go over the plaster. I'm discussing with them, painters, as far as the humidity issue, I had some, I said, hey, have you guys been testing the plaster to make sure? And the lead painter said, absolutely, we do moisture testing, make sure that we are not gonna be creating adherence issues. So that was one of our first questions, was did the plaster not dry properly? Sounds like that's not an issue, so again, back to the question of dehumidifiers, I think we could really nail down to it just with a purely environmental situation. With the painters, essentially, what we asked them is, what they're asking for here is that just, there was just extra work that was, couldn't have been anticipated due to unforeseen conditions, but they're on site, things are cruising along, and hopefully we'll be wrapped up by the end of this week.
Okay, I'll move to approve.
It's been moved, is there a second?
I got a question, but I'll second that.
Jeff has moved, Santos has seconded, further discussion?
Um, those four inch holes in the walls, what, the ceilings, what are those for? Just like, there's a random, are those the lights, or the recessed lights?
Those are the geothermal.
Are you talking about the penetrations, of course, through the?
Yeah, they're.
Yeah, so those are, that's where we're gonna have the new diffusers for, there'll be a, so all the current geo system, there's fan coil units in the courtroom, basically those little cabinets down in the ground, so the courtroom, we decided, we're basically gonna do the load, and we needed to provide that. There's gonna be a larger unit, fan coil unit that'll be located in the attic, and it'll be ducted to basically distribute that air, so.
Those are ducts.
Kicking down from above, yep, so those will have the diffusers over top of that, when we get finished up with the plaster and the paint, HVAC will come in and put their drums in there, and that will head around the users.
I think there are openings there too, for ceiling fans.
For the most part, you'll see some of the central spots, I think those boxes are already in place, by and large, the larger openings you see are for the new ductwork and the new diffusers.
Do we have a motion in a second, and any further discussion?
I have two questions, yeah, but two questions that I have for Mike. One, I got a call on the new county building, what, do we have an estimate what that cost is per square foot for the new building?
Per square foot, I would say it'd be premature to put that right now, I think the last, when we met to talk about schematic design, we think the overall project cost was somewhere around one point three million, but that includes site work, things along that line, so I don't have an exact breakout of the square foot cost. I think we're probably somewhere in the two hundred dollars per square foot just for the building, but I couldn't say for the overall project cost. We also did, per, through request and direction, expand the footprint slightly to accommodate the twelve by twelve overhead doors, so I haven't gone back and done an analysis since that point.
Okay, if you could just get that back to us in an email or something later down the road. And then, a couple weeks back, we had a failure on some valves that we had, we were gonna end up replacing, and I think I requested to find out what kind of valves they were. Did you get that yet?
I do, yep, so I did talk to the Doug's Heating and Cooling, he's gonna do that work, I asked them two questions, one about the valve, and then whether we needed to look at the rest of them. So the valve itself is a quarter turn ball valve, shut off. Talking to the technician, he said he has never seen one of those valves fail before, so. I was kind of questioning, is this something we wanna look at, test all of them, he kind of said, well, I don't know if you wanna do that, but it sounds like it's not a very common failure, and the cost, I said, would it be a good, you know, use the taxpayer's money to look at all those valves? And he said, no, absolutely not, so, it's kind of one of those things, it's just, it's a, we call a flat fail part, and when it breaks, then you fix it, but.
So the other valves are also ball valves?
Correct.
That's all I have.
Okay, so I will get back to you, and I'm gonna give you an approximate cost per square foot. Again, I'll just stress that any sort of cost at this point, you always tell people, what did you pay per pound per car? It's a, it's a little bit of an apples and oranges thing, but if you're, if you're interested, I can certainly pass that information along. I would say that the cost estimate would be part of the public record, so that maybe would be more valuable.
Yes, it's just what, there are initial questions that were asked to me, and I didn't have those, those numbers.
Sure, I just, I just wanted to stress that that's not a, that's not a great metric, if particular people are starting to be concerned about costs, I would recommend we look at the overall project, and not necessarily that, solely that figure.
Good point, thank you.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor? Aye. Post, motion passes. Anything else, Mike?
That's it for today.
All right, we'll let you off the hot seat.
I appreciate it, you did very good questions, and we will keep on top of this. I'm excited to see things coming together, and kind of the nature of these renovation type projects.
Most of the work, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item number five is discussion, possible action to approve or deny the twenty eighteen disabled veterans homestead tax credit applications as recommended by the county assessor. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. The assessor's office is recommending the approval of the two thousand eighteen veterans homestead tax credit as presented to the Board of Supervisors. Mine's very simple, if there are no questions, I ask the board for their approval for the new eleven applications that we have.
Do we have a motion? I'll second. Jeff has moved, Scott has seconded, is there any discussion?
How does somebody get this? Does, do they just have to apply, they're disabled veterans, do they have to be fifty, or a hundred percent disabled?
Um, that changed in two thousand thirteen, I believe. It used to be thirty-five thousand, they had to make less than thirty-five. Now, there is no limit on the amount of money that they can make. But they have to be disabled, or unemployable disabled, and that's on the application, they have to fill that out. And it's a one-time signing, as long as they live here at this house, if they buy another home, then they have to re-sign.
Okay.
Well, we thank them for their service.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Or opposed?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number six, action to accept the following reports. I'll just read them all out. A sheriff's office, civil departments reported fees collected for the last quarter ending June 30th, 2019 is $23,288.17. Treasure reported fees collected of $303,696.15. Auditor reported fees collected for the last quarter of $1,648.63. And D, the recorder reports fees collected of $64,017.94 plus the will of the board.
I'll move their approval, second.
We have a motion by Jeff for all four to be approved, Scott has seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Item number seven, discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of the July 1st meeting. Scott has moved.
Second.
Jeff has seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Item number eight is correspondence, Santos, start with you, sir.
We had a, I got a call in regards to the county building that we just discussed, what the cost. And then we had a meeting with Welead to, it was not a meeting, I think it goes from with city council, so that was more correspondence. And it was more around making sure that the position that we have for the economic development did not get approved by the city council, which I think will still work out for the economic development in Welead. And that was a half of correspondence.
I received a message on, two messages, two actually contacts on the recycling in Muscatine County. One from Laura Leges, anybody that knows Laura, she used to run the transfer station of the city, no longer does that. But she was wanting to make sure that everybody understood the potential implication of lack of recycling on the landfill operations and having to extend landfill cells, which I think is something of our concern. I think with the solid waste commissioner will want to discuss that. The other thing is I had a, a message from a couple in Letts, city of Letts, saying they were frequent users of the recycling facility down there and said that they would be willing, don't know how that would work, said, you know, to, to pay or for that service because while they do have the availability with their, she wasn't certain, because I think their trash pickup was out of Columbus, but she wasn't certain whether they offered recycling or not. And said, well, it was a little bit onerous for her and her husband, they're elderly, to get it down their road to the curb to do it. It's, was much more, much easier for them to load it in their car and bring it to the transfer station in Muscatine. So I think these are things that we need to keep in mind as we move forward. And I don't think people were looking for a free ride, but interested in that service.
I also had a contact about recycling and sure, it's a person that we are exploring options and considering a lot of different angles on it.
I had a call in regards to part exemption status on the building site and I'll be speaking with Eric on that issue.
I, I would just make a quick note too, it's, I feel remiss if I didn't mention to folks on the whole recycling issue. If you remember, any good environmentalists tell you reduce, reuse, and then recycle is the last option. So it's really about reducing the amount of waste you generate or reusing it for a primary use if you can find it, so.
Committee's done? I have no committees either. I had one scheduled, but we ended up rescheduling for this week, so I did not have any.
None for me.
No, nothing.
Clean slate. All right. Item number 10 is receive information from county employees. Nobody's jumping up? So item number 11, items with the administration office. Sherri, you going to be handling that? All right, so item A is discussion and possible action to approve the appointment of Keith White to the Muscatine County Veterans Affairs Commission to fulfill the vacancy through June 30th, 2020.
Well, I'd move to approve.
All right, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Very glad to meet Keith, thank you very much.
Thanks for your willingness to serve. It's important.
Item B, any other items to the administration office?
Just want to let the board know that the state auditors aren't here today or I believe they'll be here for two weeks to begin the audit process. So you'll be seeing some strangers.
Is that, is that issue with state auditor not being an account, as I recall? Can they give us a clean audit or?
Apparently so, I mean.
Somebody waved the wand at the school now?
Apparently, yes.
All right, that's the one for you. All right, anybody else? Okay, then we are adjourned.